Good evening, everyone. It's Thursday, February 21st. We're in the community room, or the governor's room of the community center, and this is the regular meeting of the St. Peter Board of Education. I'd like to call that meeting to order. And would you all please stand and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we consider and adopt the agenda before us?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries and the agenda is adopted. We have opportunities for members to speak to specific agenda items when we get to them. If you wish to do so, there's cards in the back that you can fill out and then get them to Becky on the end. When we get to that agenda item, we'd allot you opportunity and time to speak. This evening, we have a consent agenda. And as per our habit, we'll read through the consent agenda items. If there are anything individually we want to deal with, we will, otherwise, motion to approve being in order. So tonight on our consent agenda, we are approving the organizational meetings of January 7, 2019. We are approving the regular board meeting minutes of January 7, 2019. We are approving the special board meeting minutes on January 22, 2019. We are approving the board study session minutes of February 4, 2019. We are approving bills from January 2019 of $1,608,967.26 and wire transfers through December of $2,387,250.23. And January 2019 of $5,135,602.80.
Mr. Chair, I was down at the district office this afternoon, and all the bills are in order.
Thank you. We have a number of personnel items. We are approving the hiring of a .167 long-term math substitute teacher at St. Peter High School, effective January 2, 2019. We are approving the hiring of a .33 long-term math substitute at St. Peter High School, effective January 2, 2019. We're accepting the resignation of paraprofessional at North Elementary School, effective January 9, 2019. We're accepting the resignation of a paraprofessional at Hoffman Learning Center, effective January 25, 2019. We're accepting the resignation of a special education paraprofessional at South Elementary School, effective January 25, 2019. We are approving the hiring of a 6.25-hour-per-day special education paraprofessional and .5-hour-per-day traffic guard at South Elementary, effective January 14, 2019. This is a replacement position. We are approving the hiring of a full-time custodial engineer at St. Peter Middle School, effective January 15, 2019. This is a replacement position. We are approving the hiring of 3.5-hour-per-day school-age care assistant for community and family education, effective January 7, 2019. This is also a replacement position. We are approving the hiring of a long-term substitute sixth-grade math teacher at St. Peter Middle School, effective January 27, 2019, or the start of a maternity leave. We are accepting of the resignation of a Title I paraprofessional at North Elementary School, effective January 21, 2019. We are approving the transfer of a Title I paraprofessional to a .83-hour-per-day reading intervention teacher at North Elementary School, effective January 22, 2019. This is a result of the restructuring of Title I services at North for the remainder of the year. We are approving the hiring of a 6.5-hour-per-day paraprofessional at Hoffman Learning Center, effective February 4, 2019. This is a replacement position. We are approving of an increase to five days per week for a paraprofessional at St. Peter High School, effective January 22, 2019. This is a replacement position. We are accepting the resignation of a Title I paraprofessional at South Elementary School, effective February 12, 2019. We are approving the hiring of a school-age care assistant for St. Peter Community and Family Education, effective January 22. This is a replacement position. We are approving the hiring of a school-age care assistant for St. Peter Community and Family Education, effective January 22, 2019. This is also a replacement position. We are approving the hiring of a long-term substitute fifth-grade English-language arts substitute teacher for St. Peter Middle School, effective February 14, 2019, or the start date of a maternity leave. Just a few more. We are approving of an increase of a 1.5-hour-per-day paraprofessional position for a part-time art teacher at St. Peter Middle School, effective January 22, 2019. This is a replacement position. We are approving the hiring of a 6.5-hour-per-day Title I paraprofessional at South Elementary School, effective February 19, 2019. This is a replacement position. We are approving the hiring of a fifth-grade science-long-term substitute teacher at St. Peter Middle School, effective March 22, 2019, or the start of a maternity leave. We got something in the water. The acceptance of the resignation of a school-age care assistant at St. Peter Community and Family Education, effective January 31, 2019. And the approval of hiring of 4.75-hour-per-day special education paraprofessional at South Elementary, effective March 4, 2019. This is a replacement position. And lastly, the approval of additional advisors and coaches. We have three for speech. And I'll let you read their names into the record, because I'd get it wrong.
The three assistant speech coaches are Alicia Elleringer, Caleb Kringle, and Isabel Zwaska.
So do we have anything individually we want to work on?
Yes, Mr. Chair. May we take Item 6H back to Personnel Committee for the consideration?
Absolutely. 6H back to Personnel. Anything else?
No, sir.
With that adjustment, a motion to approve the consent agenda would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. And the motion carries. Consent agenda is approved. Student spotlight for the evening. Mr. Dougherty.
Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm very excited to introduce you to our February North Elementary Student Spotlight Student of the Month. Her name is Esmeralda Garcia Sanchez. She's a fourth grader at North in Mrs. Lebrun's room. I had a great conversation with Esmeralda today, kind of laid out, like, everything that was going to happen. We talked about, you know, kind of being a part of this meeting and just talking about, like, all the good things going on at North and in Esmeralda's life. And of course, like, we talked about, like, it's kind of hard to brag about ourselves. But I'm like, that's what we're going to do tonight, because you exact, you earn that. So, you know, this is new this year. I'm super excited having North students being recognized at board meetings. And of course, I can talk all day about North kids. Unfortunately, I only get two spots during the school year, and she gets, she earned our February one. And I sent an email out to the whole building. Mrs. Mikezner responded, and she's like, I would like to put about 60 students down, but I think I'm going to have to say Esmeralda is my pick for this month. And so I'm going to turn it over to her a little bit. I got some questions for her, just starting with North, just being a fourth grader at North. Esmeralda, like, what's your favorite part about being a North star, a North Elementary student? Like, what do you like doing there in the day?
Mostly helping students, like, get to know their English. Like, helping them if they have, if they have, like, if they speak Spanish and they don't know, like, English. Me and my friends could probably help them, just speak Spanish to them and help them, like, you know, just concentrate on what they're doing and my teachers doing.
Yeah, and that's what Mrs. Mikezner said and Miss Lebrun. They said, Esmeralda doesn't even pause when there's a student that's still working on English and they know Spanish. Esmeralda's very fluent in both languages. So she steps up all the time, like, I can help them out and just helping them with their math around the building, learning more about the content areas that they're studying in fourth grade projects. She said, like, she doesn't even bat an eye. Like, she wants to help out all kids, especially the students that are learning English. What do you, I noticed, or I learned something about you and your after-school hours. You spend a lot of time doing what after school?
Karate.
Yeah, so tell us about that. Like, how much time do you, you spend practicing karate and what level belt are you?
I'm in purple belt and mostly, like, spent, like, 45 minutes in karate. And we mostly go there, like, five times a week. And also, I'm not actually going to stay for purple belt for a long time, because this Saturday, I'm going to test for blue belt, just like my brother. And yeah, mostly, yeah.
So the commitment level to that, I mean, not only going through a seven-hour-plus school day, but then logging another 45 minutes, four to five days a week after that, to perfect something that she doesn't have to do, I thought was just remarkable. Yeah, and you brought a lot of people along with it. Are you able to introduce everybody and you kind of point out who's behind here?
Okay, so right here is my mom. And the one that's eating is my nephew. And my sister right there, my brother in the back, and my dad.
All right. Thanks for coming so much. But that's Esmeralda. Like I said, and you, we better recognize the teacher that nominated you, too.
Miss Mikezner.
All right. So anyway, congratulations, Esmeralda. You're a wonderful representative of North Elementary School. If anybody has questions for Esmeralda, she'd love to answer them.
Just, just statement. Esmeralda, I have no question in my mind you're going to go to college. And when you do, I hope you'll think about being a teacher, because you have so much to offer. We would just love to have you even think about St. Peter sometime in your future.
Where's your dojo?
My dojo? He's, he's a mankato. His name is Tim Flynn. I call him Master Flynn, because he gives us names that we can call him. And yeah, mostly, he teaches really good. He's in a black belt, you know, helping other students. He goes for other belts, too, not just purple. There's white, yellow, orange, green, purple, red, no, blue, red, brown, black and brown, and black.
How far are you going to go?
Uh, I don't know.
We'll see where it takes us.
So great life.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. I see we don't have Student Council tonight, so chat goes down into our action items. And we have another fun item tonight under action. Dr. Peterson, we're accepting a gift from Kraus Anderson Construction.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Coming to the front table is a face very familiar to St. Peter Public Schools, Gary Benson. We're going to ask Gary to speak here in just a second. But as your board cabinet indicates, the school district has an ongoing community capital campaign. And from time to time, local individuals, businesses, or not so local, have come forward to provide gifts to the school district for any number of reasons. I'm going to turn it over to the Gifts and Donations Chair, Mr. Carlson, to go over what that committee meeting was all about. But we're really excited to have Gary here and hear his presentation tonight.
Yeah, so the Gifts and Donations Committee got together. There's a board policy that gifts of a certain amount or greater need to be approved through that committee. And we are very excited and very thankful to Kraus Anderson, Gary, and for their gift. And we, as a committee, recommend wholeheartedly the acceptance of the gift from Kraus Anderson.
All right. Well, thank you, Board Member Carlson and Mr. Chair, members of the school board, and Superintendent Peterson. It's, it's a privilege for me to be back here and see so many familiar faces again. And it's doubly a pleasure to come and actually be bringing you money, not a, not a pay application, not a change order request, nothing we have to wrestle over. So I'd like to just lay out a little bit what's behind this and then confer the learning grant to you. So the background on this particular opportunity that Kraus Anderson availed itself of, back when the Energy Policy Act of 2005 was enacted, so this is a federal program, Congress enacted what they called Section 179D of the Internal Revenue Code. And what that did was it, at that time, it was to encourage design and construction of energy-efficient buildings. And specifically, the program that we applied for under, with your project and a number of other K-12 projects, it allows public sector and government owners of buildings, which a school district is, to allocate potential 179D deductions for projects that involve the installation of energy-efficient, whether it's building envelope, heating, ventilating, air conditioning systems, electrical, lighting, hot water, those types of things. And obviously, with your new state-of-the-art high school, there are many number of things that qualified under this, under this act. And so you, as the public owner, had to give us the authorization to submit your project and candidate components of that, which, and then we, as a privately-owned, tax-paying company, can apply for that. And we did, and there's actually, well, as I said, we did a number of school projects, including yours. There's, there's quite a process that you have to go through. We had to hire an outside independent auditor to audit the work and that it qualifies. And then, of course, the feds get to look that over. But the long and short of it is Kraus Anderson and its owners received tax benefits from this program. And because of that, because of our, our desire as a company to give back to the K-12 sector, and in particular, our partnership with St. Peter Public Schools, we wanted to bring you tonight a learning grant in the amount of $10,000 as a result of this opportunity. And there is a check here, too, and it's not just the certificate, so. And Peterson is O-N, not E-N, or, okay. So that's what I'm here for, and I'm, I'm pleased to have you already say that you want to accept this. And it's, it's an honor to continue our partnership with St. Peter Public Schools and hope that somewhere down the road, you'll tell us how this, how you put this to use. And we always want to check back and find out about that. Who knows, maybe I'll come to another meeting and say hello.
Awesome.
Thank you. Any questions or?
That's great. Thank you so much.
No, thank you.
Thank you. So requires a motion.
I move that we accept the gift from Kraus Anderson.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary.
Next item we have is an annual thing that we do, which is to set the fund balance reserve goal. Dr. Peterson and the Finance Committee.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'll turn this over to Committee Chair Meeks in just one second. But as you mentioned, it is a part of board policy that the board review and set by motion a fund balance goal for the year. That goal has changed over the years based on circumstances within the district, including enrollment, funding, and all sorts of different circumstances. The board will recall that discussion has happened at not only the Finance Committee level, but also at the February study session. And so with that introduction, I'd ask the Finance Committee to provide some context and rationale for tonight's recommendation.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to put a motion on the floor first.
Very well.
I'd like to move that we set a fund balance goal of 60 days for the coming school year, or for the coming fiscal year.
Can you get a second?
Second.
Have a second.
Mr. Chair, we did spend a lot of time on this in the study session, but I just want to remind board members of several facts. This is really an insurance policy. What it does, it allows us to assure the students that are within our system that are attending the St. Peter Public School at its various levels that whatever they need, or what is in purr, braskus, and whatever they need will continue as long as feasible. We know we can't promise everybody anything, but we can promise some things. That doesn't happen to be one of them, unfortunately, because we're at the, I think you're going to find out a little bit later this week, some of the things we've thought during this life-saving session have probably got changed quite drastically. And we always have to be prepared for that. That's why I call this an insurance policy. It's sitting there, it's there when we need it, but we only hopefully touch it when we need it. 60 days is what I believe is, is short of what I believe is the statewide average of about 80 days. So it's not like we're on the rich side of the districts. We're actually on the bottom half of the half of districts that have a fund balance. And I know you're sick of this, and I know my staff at MSBA was more than sick of this, but you can only spend a buck once. And when you spend that dollar, it's gone. I think Mr., Tim isn't here tonight, but I believe he told us that one day is worth about $70,000.
That's correct.
Okay. So once you spend that $70,000, only one day, then you got to find $70,000 sometime to get it back. And we know one thing from the state budget. And during good times, the money's here, and when bad times, it's our money. And somehow, we have to have that money to bring us up so that we can continue to offer the educational programs, classes, and curricular activities that our students deserve. Mr. Chairman, I ask for a yes vote. I'd be happy to answer any questions with our.
Questions and comments, questions, comments?
Yeah, I, I'm going to vote in support of, of the fund balance goal being 60 days, with the understanding that we will continue to discuss what the proper thing, proper level of reserve we should have going forward. The, the one thing that, while 60 days is great, I think, the one thing, we also have other redundancies that we build in and conservative estimates that, that also keep us in a good, good spot overall. And while you can only spend a buck once, if, if it's going to enhance the educational opportunities for our students and maybe raise our achievement level, I, I, I hope that we continue to have ongoing discussions about what might be best, so. But it's been discussed very thoroughly, and I'm sold for now on, on that 60 days is good. But again, discussion going forward to enhance the educational experience, even if it drops 10 days, would be something that I would hope that we continue to do.
See how much fun this is, Ben? You'll find out next year.
And we do go through that dialogue each and every year, and it is almost continuous, right? Because we keep the finance pretty high on the priority list as we go through our, our year. And we try and look down the road, and we, we want to make sure that we are not thinking about just today, but tomorrow and the, and the time after that. And, you know, when we had, after we had our, our study session discussion, it was a good discussion. Did you see that the very next day, there was a school district up north, a little ways away from here, that is just in all kinds of agony, because they got to make 7% reduction in their, in their budget? That 7% turns out to be seven figures of reduction. And, and the, the programs that they were looking at, you know, kind of nipping away at? Whew, we don't want to be there. And, and so sometimes, we, you know, we do have that long view, but we've always had the, the short view, too, of what can we do and what can't we do. And I think the board has done a great job of balancing that over time.
Mr. Chair, just another quick example that Tim Regner shared at the administrative meeting today, which really demonstrates how quickly things can change in your budget. Tim shared the, the example that over the last two weeks, South Elementary has hired four kindergartners. So South, so in the, in the grand scheme of things, you're thinking, whoa, four kids. Well, okay. Tim's like, well, think about it. Four kids, 6,500, general, general math, $6,500, general education formula, times 13 years. And you, so you take a kid coming in, a new student starting as kindergartners, and staying with you for 13 years, that's significant dollars over the course of their education in the school district's, you know, budget. Of course, that can go the other way, too, when four, five, six, eight kids decide that maybe there's a different option. So that's why everything is so important to, to the success of our city, our school, and all that.
Others? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. We have a 60-day number to work with. Next item we have is our legislative priorities for the 2019 season. John, are you doing this, or you and Bob together?
I think it'd probably be more appropriate coming from Bob, if that's all right with you.
Absolutely. And if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, I'd just like to give a real quick update on the budget, state budget. The six positions that, or five positions, excuse me, that we talked about at the study session, I believe it was, have not changed. They're basically a 3% increase on the formula each year, the general ed formula. We'll talk about that in a minute. Fully fund Minnesota's portion of the cross subsidy of special ed. I'll talk about that in a minute. Increase of provide equitable funding for school district mental health services. That is part, the governor has some money in his budget for that. Support increased flexibility and local control is a general position that we've had for a number of years. And support a plan to align rules and statutes with federal law to reduce mandates. It's true in special ed as well as other areas. So that's the five positions, Mr. Chair. If you grant me just a minute to talk about, well, let me move those.
Second. Motion and a second.
Just give me a couple of minutes here. The governor came out with his budget, and I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it, but I had a quick view of it, and it's about $733 million more for education, K-12, pre-K-12 education. It's 3% on the formula, the first year, 2%. I believe that was $189, the first year, and something like $153 or something the second year. Special ed, he's putting some money in there, but you got to read the fine print. It's not money to reduce the cross subsidy. It's money so that the cross subsidy does not increase. And we all know it's a very substantial cross subsidy in, in St. Peter. I know it's between $400 or $500, I believe, of, of general ed revenue. And it's not the kids' fault. These are mandates that are put on us by the states and the feds, state and the feds. The children are deserved every penny of program that they, that they need. But the problem is the feds, they support 40%, they've never come close to it. The state had a higher percentage in the past and it's kind of fallen back over time. But at least if the governor's budget goes forward intact, the increase, or the... But at least if the governor's budget goes forward intact, the increase or the cross subsidy won't increase. There's some school security levy increases, there are some teachers of color revenue. There's, it's a good budget. The issue that's going to come up will be raised later this week. Most people, most pundits are telling us that the one point five billion dollar budget surplus that was projected a month ago, and you remember we talked about, the governor has to base his budget on a January forecast and the, or December, I can't even remember anymore. And the legislature, when is it?
November.
November, I, while I was.
November and February.
And then the legislature uses the February forecast. February forecast comes out later, or not this week, excuse me, next week. And most people are saying it's going to be drastically lower. And what they're basing that on is the tax revenues that have been coming in for the last several number of months. And just if you just, if the state just funds inflation on all of the current programs, that's one point two billion. So at one point five billion, it wasn't like we had money coming out of our pockets, the state didn't. So it's going to be very interesting. I would suggest that, you know, for future purposes, and I know this is conservative, but the finance committee and others may want to start looking at a forecast or a built-in budget for future of one point percent and one percent. Just to, you can always add money to it, it's really difficult to reduce it once it's built into the, the plan. So, Mr. Chair, thank you for the time and I really, like, really enjoyed the role of Chair and I know John will do a great job.
Others want to contribute to this discussion about our priorities and what we do with them?
I think, uh, kind of tied into the special education element is not necessarily, there's a hearing, a committee hearing on Monday, the twenty-fifth, and where New Ulm schools have brought forth, uh, trying to get policies changed to kind of reduce the, not kind of, to reduce paperwork for our special education teachers, which is desperately needed. They spend so much time on paperwork and they got into it to be teachers, not to, to do a ton of paperwork. And I, I'm hoping that I unfortunately will be out of state, but it's at ten o'clock at the, uh, state office building. If anybody wants to attend, I think it would be, the, the show of support for this would be huge in moving it forward out of committee.
We have a motion in the second to present these to our local legislators and to give them to the state house. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries and this is our flag. Next item we have tonight, we alluded to earlier in our meeting with the city, is the approval of a one-year agreement maintenance for Community Spirit Park. Dr. Peterson?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board, the facilities committee met earlier this week, had a chance to review the agreement in a little bit more detail. As the chair mentioned, there was a general conversation with the city tonight and we had an opportunity to hear from some staff about how the arrangement has gone. Included in the agreement, as I believe it was, Crafty mentioned, we are bringing forth the recommendation that this is a one-year agreement, just like last year's. And, um, and that, that provides us with a lot of flexibility over the next calendar year to see how the second spring and summer goes and allows the boards some discretion, discretion moving forward as to future agreements, whether it's with the city or any other entity.
Mr. Chair, I have one question maybe I should have asked you earlier. Number six on page fifty-five talks about determination. Maybe I just have an older copy, but it says December one, two thousand, I think it was two thousand eighteen. Why is December one the date? I mean, evidently we've had mutual agreement to extend it, we're beyond that now.
Right, I believe if the, if the agreement is approved tonight, that'll change to twenty nineteen.
But December one of twenty nineteen?
Right, so we would get through, we'd get through the spring, summer and fall, growing, maintenance. CSP would be put to bed and then if, if the board wanted to make a, a decision to end the agreement, they could.
Okay, thank you.
And going back to the meeting tonight, what, why not a multi-year? We're still trying to figure out each, each other's roles between the city and the school district?
Uh, yeah, I, I think the roles have been clarified and I think that we are off to a good start. I think that both sides recognize that it's still early. I mean, there's still things that are being worked out in, in terms of just like communication and, um, and just the level levels. I think the one year isn't a hedge on, wow, this didn't really work, so let's just see. I think it was more of a, actually it worked, it worked so well, let's do that again and then if we can get a couple of good years under our belt, then maybe look at it one year.
All right, thank you.
I think that's fair. It, it still is a bit of a work in progress as we add things to the park out there and, you know, we had a bit of an unusual year last year in, in how the work was done. It was done well, but I mean, it wasn't like this year it's going to be different because it's, people are going to know what to expect and, and so we're maybe going to get a truer look at where, where we are. We get an excellent detailed billing from the city that comes monthly and so we get a chance to see reconciliation of what's being billed and, and those sorts of things are, are really useful. I think one of the other bits too in, in, you know, our practice on the board, we, whenever we have these type of partnerships or agreements, we usually have a routine manner of, of looking for an RFP or to look at a different bid or something, whether it's our insurance or it's milk and bread or whatever. I mean, the, the school board just has a, a wheel that turns and, and so keeping us coming back to the table is, is not a bad thing here. And it may be that it goes to a two or a three-year thing before it comes back to the table as we gain more experience, but for now it just, we're, the city's not really used to that, so we're both on it. Becky, do we have a motion?
Uh, move, we approve the, this year's maintenance agreement with the Community Safe Park, the city, second.
We have a motion in the second. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. We have an agreement on our side, city's still got to approve it. Next thing we have tonight is the achievement and integration plan for St. Peter Public Schools. Peterson?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board, at the table we have Ms. Crafty, Mr. Lustig, who are going to provide some details, but this is a, a short introduction. This is really an exciting night for our school district as we enter into the world of achievement and integration. Overarching goal is to improve our equity work and as we've talked at the administrative level for months and months and months, all of our equity work is focused around reducing barriers and increasing opportunities. That is what the state plan expects and it's now been virtually a year since we have been working internally, providing brief updates to the board, providing study session dialogues, working on big goals, what the metrics would be for how we're going to establish or how we're going to gauge, how well are we doing, are we making those goals? Putting together what the specific strategies will be. We appreciate the fact that the board had an opportunity just at the February study session once again to take a look at the plan, ask some questions that we were able to then go back and, and refine to make sure that if and when this plan does get approved by the board and gets sent to the state, the likelihood of the state greenlighting it and saying, go for it and make a big difference in the lives of kids and families in your community. And so tonight is where we get to put, at least in this stage, the final bow on it. Buddy Tiv and John are going to share with the board, but also with our community about the more specific items, because we can talk about how our integration plan is going to reduce barriers, but what John and Tiv have kind of prepared tonight is, so what are we actually going to do? What, what's actually going to happen in our school district that's, that we expect to make a big difference for kids? So, with that.
So, thank you, Board Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Peterson. Superintendent Peterson summarized, you know, it's a three-year plan and beginning in fiscal year twenty, so next school year, the St. Peter Public Schools will become eligible for a little over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in new funding. This money can be used for new things, but it cannot be used to replace or supplant things we're going to do. So, overall, within the guidelines of the state for how we're going to spend this money, we're going to spend approximately eighty percent, eighty-six percent of the, the new funding specifically on student-specific activities. These activities will be focused on a couple of key areas. One will be looking to hire two student support liaison positions and these people will directly work with and support students in coordination to expand their academic and college and career readiness. We're also looking to add after-school academic support and this academic support will be directly aligned with in-school academic and learning to really just target in and help those students. But as part of that, we're going to use the funding to provide some transportation so that students can access that. So there would be transportation between buildings at the end of the day to get students to that after-school support. We're also going to be looking to expand and provide new opportunities for summer enrichment opportunities for students. Specifically, we're looking at a scrubs camp, which is kind of targeted to try and help students get, become focused and interested in more health-related career areas, as well as camp invention to, to in, bring in some more inquiry and help students really become motivated to ramp up their academic needs in school that's focused on helping them with their careers after school. And a big part of the achievement and integration plan is cross or inter-district and cross-cultural experiences. So we're looking to add some student voice dialogue sessions that'll be facilitated by the public deliberation and dialogue program at Gustavus, but this will be working with four other school districts. So we'll be bringing some of our students along with students from Mankato Schools, Cleveland Schools, Jamesville Water, Waterville Pemberton Schools and St. Clair Schools. And these will happen at multiple times throughout the school year and give an opportunity for students not only to engage with different students and peers from around the region, but also to go to those different school districts so that schools will take turns on where they're hosting those dialogue sessions. And in addition, another cross-cultural and inter-district will be an equity summit. The equity summit will be in the summertime and it'll actually include not just students, but it'll include the staff as well. So teachers and teacher leaders and administrators, all three groups working together as part of the summit. And in addition to the eighty-six percent that we're going to spend on direct student services, we're also going to look to spend fourteen percent of the money on professional development and indirect costs.
Yep, so as John said, fourteen percent of our allocation is identified or take, marked for professional development and indirect services. So some things we're looking at and are listed in the plan is to allow teachers to attend the equity summit as well. And that's really to just develop culturally responsive strategies, courageous leadership training, and that focuses on a multi-phase racial equity program. Top twenty training, which really revolves around student and school culture and environment. And then response to intervention or RTI training that works to ensure that students are responding to instruction and meeting those performance benchmarks. So again, between this direct services, professional development and indirect services, that's the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars right there. So really, really nice opportunities for our school district. Questions about the programming that we've listed or, or anything else about the achievement and integration plan?
Anyone?
I fully support and recommend approval of the, of the plan tonight. If approved by the board, the plan will be submitted to Minnesota Department of Education immediately so we can get feedback from them, make any revisions if needed, make sure that it gets approved well before July one.
All right. Seeing no questions, this does require a motion.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion in the second to approve the achievement and integration plan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Plans good, go.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Information items tonight. The first one's easy. We've got a attachment in here and elsewhere, which is the school board community appointments for two thousand and nineteen. And, and for those who, there's some big changes, big changes not in, that we don't have a lot of success with what we're doing, but we, we know that there's going to be change on the board this year, right, Bob?
Yes, sir.
And, and so we wanted to get people on committees because what, the way we do it is we put three board members on a committee and if your name is on that committee, when you're setting the appointment and you're working on the budget between the superintendent, not the part of the, not the budget, but the agenda, between the superintendent, myself, I mean, you're the one who needs to be there. If you want to join those other sessions, you can take in as many as you want. And we just wanted to make sure that we had people maybe getting into an arena they haven't been into before or they haven't been into for several years, knowing that the passions that we have for various committees will, will encourage their attendance on a voluntary basis, not being required to be there, but to be there to pass on some legacy information. The one committee that did stand is negotiations and keeping that very steady throughout this year because it is a negotiation year and with some, some luck, we'll be done with that by, by January when somebody wants to ride off into the sunset, so. But that's, that's where we are, we've got a published bid. And Becky, I think they're up on the website, right?
It will be after the big survey, definitely.
Okay. So, that's, that's part of our information items for tonight. The other.
Did, did I understand right? I don't know if you meant to say it this way, but you tried to put us on committees that we aren't necessarily interested in because you know we'll go to the ones that we are interested in so that we're.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, I'm just checking if I didn't, wasn't sure if that's the point you were getting across. Okay. It'll work, actually. I'm still going to finance, so.
Yeah, it'll work. That gets us to the, the next thing we have tonight, which is our policy. Ben, are you going to?
I think I am.
Yeah.
I don't think.
Super prepared for it, yeah.
No more.
Yeah, after tonight's performance, I won't be on that committee anymore.
Yeah, I guess, Bob, you're supposed to lead this right now.
I did finance, I didn't.
So, this is the first reading of chapter one and we just went through and made some small revisions. I don't recall any massive changes. You can see in the highlighted portions there on page three and several other pages where those changes have been made. We changed one-four to reflect some changes that we wanted to make and that we felt committed to making, but I don't think that it changes the tenor of, of that policy or changes anything substantively.
Well, I mean, some of the, some of the stuff, as an example, is that we've got our buildings determined by what grades are in them, right? What we've changed since the last time this policy was done. So it's just a matter of saying that the middle school now has grade levels five through eight. You know, things like that. So those are some of the standard updates. And then we always use the guidance from MSBA that we use to look at, make sure that certain things contain and if there are any statute changes, et cetera, et cetera. So standard practice, first reading, go through it, got any issues, things that need to be brought back to the policy, policy group needs to get together before the next scheduled meeting to deal with. meeting to deal with something, then we hammer it out. Otherwise, please come back for a second reading and adoption.
So, motion of having next committee meeting, December 30th, 2019, is that a vote?
Yeah, okay. That one, that one won't work.
To be clear, too, we also took a look at 6.1, 6.12, 7.4, 7.47, just a little bit out of order, but there were some things we wanted to look at in there, so.
All right. Questions for Ben or anyone else on call? I know there'll be a lot more questions next time when everyone's happy.
Since this is the first time since the committees have changed, we don't, when do we first follow those? I mean, is that after we have approved them and now going forth? Will be on our, okay.
Yeah, and then you get a clean copy in your pick policy book. You take the old ones out and shred them and put the new ones in there.
Okay, so as of tonight, then those...
New committees, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
That's just a solid large stuff. We're down to reports, I think, with principals, superintendents, individual board analysts.
You make it fast, it's cold in here.
I know.
All right.
All right.
You're wearing stars, you're not wearing shorts.
Interesting.
All right, well, things are moving right along in early childhood. With the number of days we've had off, we'll be taking a look at our calendar to see especially in school readiness, what we'll be able to do there for our families who pay tuition. But it is amazing that the kids get off the bus and they're still ready to go, and they're happy to be back at school, and they're mostly talking about playing in the snow, but transition hasn't been an issue as we've had kind of a little bit of a crazy schedule. Tomorrow, or excuse me, Saturday, February 23rd, we'll have our school readiness open house from 9 until 11. That gives families an opportunity to come in, see our classrooms, see the Early Childhood Center, meet teachers, register for our classes for next year if they'd like. If people are not able to make it, that's fine, too. They can contact our office to get registration information. So, we are on our way to the 1920 school year. At the end of February here, the beginning of March, we'll be holding conferences with all of our early childhood families. So that's exciting. We get to see the growth, parents get to see the growth in their students throughout the year. We also started this year at the Early Childhood Center. We've done for years at the elementary schools, I Love to Read Month, and we started that now at the Early Childhood Center. And it's been just amazing, the number of little hearts that have come back with books that families are reading to their children at home, and so we know that that's just a very important foundational experience. So we're excited that our families are participating in that. And then, again, thinking of the 1920 school year, we've begun our transition planning. In fact, our early childhood special education classes took a field trip to South today, the kids that'll be going to kindergarten. And so when we moved into the Early Childhood Center and away from South, that was part of our transition planning, is that we'd have field trips and they'll be going once a month now to get familiar with that setting and the people there and those types of things. So we're excited about that.
And it was great to see them come through the door. They introduced themselves. About every third student just shouted out their name to me, so it was really, it was fun to see them. And if you remember, South is located at the bottom of the hill. Well, with all the snow, we are just about up to Scholarship America. We're not worried about sledding anymore at South, because we're just level, level ground. At South, we have been looking, continuing with our work in the top-20 program, and each month we have a new theme. It's about every four weeks, and so it's not, doesn't work out just on the month marker. But the area that we're focusing on right now is EQ, and that is the emotional, your emotional IQ. And just talking about how there are star qualities that you have, which are your natural gifts, and then there are gifts that you develop, and there are IQ gifts, and then there are emotional gifts, and how we can develop those and work our mindset so that we can do what we, whatever we set our minds to do. So, really working on that and developing personal strengths and rolled it right into Valentine's Day, which leads itself to kindness and recognizing kindness in others and looking for ways that we can be kind to one another. So, those are all some of those soft life skills that we are covering at South in addition to the academic areas. I had the opportunity to travel with representatives from each of the buildings to a national literacy conference, and it was just amazing to hear some of the best practices from some of the gurus in literacy. And I'm excited to share, we've got a meeting next week for all of us to kind of take a look at the action plan that some of these instructional coaches and the literacy leaders in the building have kind of helped put together to kind of help shape some of our ELA work. Our access testing will begin next week for our kindergarten and first grade students, and it's a rather long process, because the kindergartners are each assessed individually, one-on-one, paper and pencil, by Iliana Derimer, who is our ELL instructor. And that really just looks at the four domains of listening, speaking, reading and writing. And what we'll be doing is measuring the progress from the early English language learners from the beginning of the year to where they're at now. So, that helps us identify how many students and what level of services we need to be providing for them. And last but not least, I'd like to invite you all out to McDonald's next Thursday night, as it is McTeacher Night. So, we currently have about eight people signed up to work shifts. We'll be there from 4:30 to 7:30. And we do still currently hold the number one spot for the most money raised in a one-hour time period out at the St. Peter McDonald's. So, you can come anytime. We will get you a burger and fries, whatever you need. And the parent council in turn gets 15 percent of the profits that night, which they turn around and use for enrichment programs for our students. So, it's always a fun night out there. We'd love to have you join us.
Shamrock shakes on the menu?
Yes, yes, yes.
Does it work if you use the app? I'm just asking for the super.
It might work better to just text, because usually the line is going out into the road, so we can get you whatever you need.
Mr. Dixon, I was just going to say the same thing. This is, I would like Mrs. Elke to make my shamrock shake. Thank you. Well, greetings from North Elementary. Lots of events going on at North here this last month and coming up in March. Mentioned last time, one of my favorite nights of the school year at North is the Arts and Academic Night, and that was on the 12th of February. Wonderful night. I mean, the showcase is just kids' talent, and it's, nothing's required to participate. I mean, these kids are just signing up to play piano, to sing. We had a beatboxer. That was on Twitter, that was phenomenal. I mean, he has, he has a career in front of him. Like, it was, it stopped the show, like, people were cheering so much. Students that put visual arts on display all over the art room outside the media center, buying books at the book fair. And then, it's just, it's a laid-back night, but it's so exciting, because it's just straight-up kids' talent. And of course, we have the science fair and interest fair on display. So kids spend a lot of time putting together projects that they're interested in, or they want to get a shot at the competition of the region. So we're sending three kids on to the regional science fair in third and fourth grade, and so they'll show up in April at MSU to try to compete against other third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth graders. So, good luck to them, and thanks for our organizers for that, Ms. Steele and Mrs. Mahls. Also, the whole month, that blends into our whole month of, some programs call it, like, I Love to Read Month. We switch it up a little bit for the North kids. Get caught reading, got to put a challenge on there, like, we're not going to do it. No, they do it. They are walking around the building with books in hands all the time, baskets full of books, going back to the media center, all sorts of evidence. We have like a little poster reveal going in the office where kids kind of demonstrate their knowledge of books they've read, so then they get to come up and take a post-it note off this huge poster. Got to try to figure out what the theme of the five posters are. Anything from that to door decorating, what their favorite cover of a book, and dropping everything, and read on Thursdays for half an hour, like, everybody in the building, everybody in the building. So just want to thank the teachers and the students for working so hard to show like how important literacy and reading is. Also, this is really exciting. We're looking, we're in the design process of putting up a new playground outside of North, and it's been a long time since we had a new playground. We have a couple playgrounds out there, and one of them's going to be replaced. And we have four of the third grade homerooms are working on a problem-based or project-based unit right now. And last week, I got to spend quite a bit of time on the playground supervising and interacting with kids, and all of a sudden, like, groups, like, pairs of third graders would come out with a clipboard, and they're checking off stuff. So they're collecting data on like what parts of the playground is used the most. So they're like, nope, three kids over here, two over here, I don't know what these guys are doing, you know, over here. And they're like, Mr. Darty, like, the playground that's being used the most is that huge pile of snow. Can we incorporate that in the playground? Like, well, every winter you can, based on this year, but it's great. So, like I said, I'm really excited about third grade teachers, knowing that those third graders will be fourth graders next year, they're going to be able to use that, bringing in the PTO to take a look at additions to the playground. But, I mean, they're using the data of the students that they're collecting, that parts of the playground the kids use. So I mean, it's perfect. It goes right along with that problem-based learning and project-based. And then, excited about fourth grade opportunity next week, we have, every year we have kindness retreat. So, Mr. Rebar, social worker, helps to write a grant. We got that grant again this year, so all fourth graders will go down to Johnson Hall. And then, student council from the high school, or National Honor Society, I mean, I believe, come to help facilitate that, along with a group from the cities. They just talk about like, what makes us different, what makes us the same. There's a lot of singing, there's probably some dancing, a lot of pizza. But it's an all-day retreat for fourth graders, and the fourth grade teachers come back every year, and they're like, these kids are different. And it's perfect timing. And they're the leaders of the building, and it's just that getting away from the building, having that literal retreat, then realize how powerful those interactions are.
Four updates, and they all deal with middle school fine arts. So, on February 2nd, we had a quintet of sixth graders attend the Owatonna Middle School Solo Ensemble Festival, and they earned, I'm trying to think of what this is called here, the Superior Rating and the Outstanding Performance Award. So, pretty impressive. On March 8th, our theater department will be putting on their version of Alice's Adventures in Wonderland, and that will start at 7 o'clock at the middle school auditorium. On March 9th, we're sending 12 students, 5th through 8th grade, to an honor band in Austin. And then finally, we have a big, big week of concerts coming up at the high school. March 11th, we have our 5th and 6th grade band. March 12th, we have our 7th and 8th grade band. And March 14th, we have 7th and 8th grade choir. So please come to those.
We've had a bit of a rough go with having to reschedule events. Some particular, in particular, some really big events. Yesterday was our Opportunity Day at the high school, so we were, we have, in particular, a lot of people work really hard to schedule that day, but Mandy Quist and Janice Akora work really tirelessly on that event. They have it all set and rescheduled for March 12th. We're able to show Screenagers again, so they've worked, they've worked out the rescheduled Opportunity Day, but that was, that was kind of a biggie, and you know, they were storm-tracking leading up to yesterday. We also are having to reschedule the visit from our 8th graders to the high school. They were scheduled to come in on an early release. It's not quite the same as the kids coming in and introducing themselves to you, but we really look forward to hosting the 8th graders at the high school. And it is really important to get them into the building early and often, I think, so, because that's a big transition. We hosted a registration, registration information night for 8th grade parents. Last, it was, I believe it was Tuesday night when we had parent-teacher conferences, and it was also blizzarding that particular evening, but we did host quite a few, quite a few parents of incoming 9th graders that evening. We also hosted the, hosted a similar event for parents of 9th through 11th graders, but it was, it was especially nice to see some of the new families. We also, I want to highlight again, the Screenagers event, which is Monday night at 6:30. That is the group of organizers that has played a significant role in helping plan that, has, they now have a name. It's called Raising Our Community's Children and Continuing the Conversation. So, the hope is, is to continue to host events such as this, such as the Know the Truth Evening, with, and cover topics that parents raising kids in today's world are interested in talking about with each other and with professionals. So, that's a, that's a great group of really involved educators, county workers and parents that we, we really appreciate their work. Farm-to-school day is next Wednesday, February 27th. That is, it's our second farm-to-school day, so our FFA and ag kids are providing much of the food that we'll be serving in the cafeteria. There's also, there's also an opportunity fair, and hopefully, we will, we will have a lot of guests who have either summer employment or future job opportunities for kids who are interested in going into any work in the ag industry. So, February 27th, and you're all welcome to come out to the high school for lunch.
I also noticed that we needed to reschedule the ACT exams.
Yes, March 12th.
That affected our household. I had a particular student who was ready to walk into the octagon. He was all, just, let's do this! And, pull it back in the last minute. He's worried he's not going to be able to get himself pumped up again. You can do this, you can do this. Get into March, we'll be all right.
More opportunity to test prep.
That's right. Spin it.
It wasn't even that snowy yesterday.
I don't know what the problem was.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Green? Yes, three items to report on. Number one, I had an opportunity last week to attend a national conference on education. Wanted to extend my thanks to the board for supporting that professional development for myself. Like many conferences, you go and you find out exciting new ideas and things that we should be looking at and exploring and investigating, and maybe bringing forward at a future time. And then in other areas, you're like, wow, we are right there, and that's great. So, whether it's culturally responsive practices or safety and security, a lot on social, emotional learning and mental health of kids across the country. There's, there's a lot going on, as our principals that we're reporting are, and a lot to do to help, kind of help reframe that within our public schools. And Vicky, this is preaching to the choir. You've known this for a very long time, for decades within our schools, it's just been kind of implied that schools are all about academic achievement, and social, emotional is kind of like a nice little add-on, nice to have. And really, that mindset is shifting across the country, which is, that now is the core, because if you don't have that, everything else, you're not going to get to where you need to go. So, appreciate the board's support of that. Related to that, this week has been designated by MSBA as School Board Recognition Week. Goes without saying to this group, but I so much appreciate your leadership. Before, having the privilege of serving in this capacity, I have told so many people how much I underestimated the time that people put in to board leadership. Not, I don't think anybody thinks or expects that people just walk in here and, oh, let's have a board meeting. But the level of committee, the committee work, those committee discussions, the individual conversations that we have, professional development that you engage in, really makes a huge difference. So, on behalf of our community, thank you very much for your leadership. Final thing I wanted to mention, none of our principals touched on it, but I just have to commend each of them for their work over the last six weeks, really related to work of equity and parent and kid engagement. As we all know, this is the first formal board meeting that St. Peter has had since our January meeting, and it was at that meeting where we had several visitors express concern to the board about parent engagement and parent communication and interacting in a more ongoing and, well, ongoing basis about how kids are doing in our schools. Our principals heard that loud and clear, and in a very short order have put together site-specific, and now we are just about ready to unveil district-level planning. site-specific, and now we are just about ready to unveil district-level plans that really bring this community wide, with both, not only community engagement, but school outreach, a healthy dose of professional development for our staff, which, which we really believe will help us move forward with not just socially, emotional, but culturally relevant, and some of the topics that we've been working through over the last several weeks. So, I really appreciate what our principals have been doing. They've been engaging with their, not only with their local or with, with their individual parents and kids, but really at the building leadership level, understanding that this isn't something that gets addressed within six weeks, and then you say, okay, what, what are we gonna do next? This is an ongoing dialogue and conversation as we make improvements to our system. So, thank you to, to all of you. So, ahead.
Thank you. Board members? Do I have any? Ben?
Oh. I was just gonna say, I wanted to thank all the school staff for what they've done during these school snow days. I mean, the extra work that's gone into that and for how the, everybody's looked out for the safety of the kids, I think that that was so great. And I know it's probably been a lot of extra work for you guys. I had heard on the news, KRBI, no, not KRBI, that's way back. Channel 12 News, they've been talking about all these schools, they want to follow St. Peter and do the Flex Learning Days. Now, everybody's kind of getting on board on that, so it's pretty interesting. They had mentioned St. Peter and how they had done that. And I, I really commend the teachers and the staff for trying to keep the kids safe. I think that was great. Done a good job.
Great. I wanted to talk about History Day. So, National History Day is an event that happens in the spring across the country. Minnesota has a very robust program. I think a lot of other states hate Minnesota because we send a lot of really good kids to Nationals and do very well. But there are thousands of kids who don't end up going to Nationals, but do participate in their school and then in their region events that are going on. And we have an event coming up in Mankato on March 19th. And to just talk a little bit about History Day and why I think it's important, most people won't grow up to do history for a job, but it's really a life skill. If you think about people needing to be able to locate information, analyze it, and come up with their own opinion, if you can't do that, you're gonna get screwed by in a car, you're gonna get screwed by in a house, you're probably not gonna understand the news very well. And so, it, it, it's a History Day competition, and it's about focusing on a topic in history, but I think it's really providing kids those research skills that they're gonna need for any career or life opportunity that they'll go on to. But that's March 19th, and if there's anybody out there who would be interested in judging, they are looking for judges, you get free parking at MSU, which is quite a value. You get dinner, free dinner. You get a free t-shirt, so you could layer for the next meeting in here if you needed to. And for those people who are maybe watching from Buffalo because they thought that Sam would be on camera at some point, there are other regional events across Minnesota that you can also volunteer for. But if you're interested, just Google History Day Minnesota and Judge, and you'll be able to find it pretty quickly.
Mr. Schur, can I follow up on that? I have judged in the past, and they give you all of the background, they pair you with somebody that's been there before, they help you with questions. It's really a neat experience. Unfortunately, I'm a Corral that day. Tuesdays are a bad day for me, but if you're free, do it. It's, you'll feel really good and you're gonna learn a lot.
Thanks, Bob.
Just a couple of other things I'd like to highlight. We had a recital out at the theater last weekend for the St. Peter Coral Group, and there was a little bit of snow that day. But our guys, our guys, Mr. Bachman's guys, it was great. I mean, once you got on school property, you were safe, okay? And you'd get in and out of the building, and it was great, and, and the presentation was fantastic and, and really wonderful to see that our facility being used for a community event. So, watch for those in the paper, they're, they're, they're really good things. Secondly, just an update to the board. MVET is in the process of going through strategic planning encompassing all seven of our districts. And in addition to that, there is a search for a leader out there of the, what's Bob's designated title?
Special Director.
Special Director. So, that's gonna be underway in the next few months, so things, things going on out there and looking to try and impact. I believe we saw a report the other day that of the districts that we serve, there's 1,134 kids receiving services associated through MVET and the various districts. And we are in seven, with seven state districts, right, John? State representatives?
State House members?
Yeah, State House members.
We have six State House members and five State Senators.
Yeah, so, a larger group of people that we can, that we can work with. And we have an upcoming Go to the Capitol Day this year.
We, we haven't discussed, I think, what we've found in the past is just to pick a different day besides the general, the big day where they invite all the board members. I think it, it becomes a little more personal.
But the MVET vehicle becomes one where you can get a consistent message across quite a number of legislative people and, and, and get that going. So, something that's, you know, continuing to evolve and grow there with, with that. And so, that was, that was a Tuesday night, wasn't it, Doc?
Right.
That's right. With that, we have upcoming meetings of the board. We have a Finance Committee meeting Thursday, 28th. Board Study Session, Monday, March 4th. Regular board meeting scheduled for Monday, March 15th. Brings us to our favorite agenda item. Ms. Tiddy?
I make motion to adjourn?
Second.
All is a favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned, thank you very much.